Okay, let's begin. Welcome to our February 26th City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Sterns. Mayor Protem Wagner. Councilmember Stackflip is running late. Councilmember Engstrom.
Here.
Mayor Mortar.
Here, thank you. Welcome to our meeting. We have an announcement to make, which I'm assuming many of you have heard about, a change in the agenda this evening. But City Manager Bruce Pope will make that announcement. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Mortar, members of the council. Staff received on Friday afternoon-
Make sure you say it loud enough for them to hear, Bruce.
Okay. A request for certain changes to be made to the Crystal Geyser industrial wastewater discharge permit, which raised certain questions about the adequacy of the permit. Subsequent to those inquiries and questions, certain other issues were raised that were forwarded to the city attorney for his consideration. And this morning, based on conversations with the city attorney, it was my interpretation, based on the advice of the city attorney and the information I had before me, that there are far too many unanswered questions evolving around this permit, people's position on the permit, and what may or may not have been agreed to. And rather than running the risk of people assuming that it was on the agenda when it wasn't, or assuming it was not on the agenda, I exercised authority, this council is granted to me, and I removed it as an item from tonight's agenda that was posted properly. Therefore, the Crystal Geyser wastewater permit is not an agendted item. If somebody in the audience wishes to address the council with respect to Crystal Geyser, they may do so during the non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, other that this item is continued indefinitely.
Thank you, Bruce. Before I ask for questions from council of Bruce, I meant to mention to you, I understand that some of you, when you walked in the room this evening, were wondering how come there were a few of us talking to a person standing up front, and we were deliberating about something. What that was, was it was a special meeting that we often hold before our regular city council meetings, when we have nominations to any of our advisory committees. And we had two advisory committees with two people each who had volunteered to be represented, to be nominated to those committees. So we were deliberating about members to the beautification and downtown enhancement committee. Tried to finish it in time for the meeting, but we're a little bit late, so, in case you were wondering. So now, thank you for your patience for any confusion. So, questions of councilmembers to Bruce about the change in the agenda. As he said, it was an announcement, it was a decision he made this morning after consulting with council to remove it from the agenda and re-agendize it as soon as we are prepared to do so. Any questions about that?
I'd like to have it back on the agenda as soon as possible. Is there a possibility of getting this decisions, or whatever this is, so we could have a special meeting next Monday?
In my estimation, that would be too soon. I would like this to be back on the agenda as soon as possible. I don't want it to come back to the city council when nobody can agree on what's in the permit. I want to get it resolved. I want agreement what is or is not in the permit, what we agree about, what we disagree about. I want it stated, so the issues are clear. The council has a clear decision to make. Approve the permit with conditions, approve it with amendments, but the issues that you need to consider are clear. They're not coming out the last minute, they're not coming out verbally, they are in writing, they are to you. We will do our level best to work with all parties to bring this permit back in completed form, goal being that we'll reach agreement, and there will not be disagreements between the applicant and the city on the permit conditions. And we'll bring that back. Therefore, you have a policy decision to make at that time, and that's your role. And I would like to do that as soon as possible.
Any other clarification needed? Okay, so those of you who are convened, you're welcome to stay. We will take your public comment, if you would choose, as an item not related to anything on the agenda. I have the sign-up list, on which there are, one, two, three, four, five, six people. If at the end of those six people you would still like to make a comment, I'm going to ask you to sort of line up on one side of the room, so we can move through us as quickly as possible. So, what I have firstly is Raven Stevens.
Hi.
Hi.
On page, the beginning page, 53 of the agenda packet for the Crystal Geyser part, Bruce, is the resolution. And the resolution states that they're gonna, Crystal Geyser's gonna open and operate a water bottling plant, adjacent to the city of Mount Shasta. For God's sake, people, it's not a water bottling plant. We could get that part right. It's a beverage manufacturing plant, and that needs to be corrected, please. On part five, under special considerations, and I'm telling you guys this, I know it's not on the agenda, but I'd like you to take up these points, so we get this right off the bat. Item six, under events, table six, says complete off-site sewer improvements, as described in the, as described in Crystal Geyser Bottling Plant. I'm not sure what Crystal Geyser Bottling Plant was, but I think it means Crystal Geyser, the EIR, the sewer improvements that were, the pipelines. And the date is December 31st, 2018. And we think that that should actually be done prior to discharge, because we're going to be going into the wet season, and as we know, the city has some pretty decent issues with rainwater, sewer water collection at the plant. I assume that you guys got the letter from Marsha Birch. Okay. And she has not been able to talk with John Kenny about it, but that the findings are missing from the agreement, and they must, to follow SEQA, they must be included. And so, I think you guys all got a copy of that, too. That needs to be in there. I want to reference an email that Rosalind McCoy sent you regarding your own statutes. And there's a permit required for export of water for use outside of the city. And it says it shall be unlawful to extract groundwater underlying the city directly or indirectly, without first obtaining a permit. And I believe you guys have that all on record. She sent that to you. So please, please be sure that an additional permit, not just the wastewater treatment permit, but an additional water use permit is there, because you guys want to extract water as well. The public wants all of Crystal Geyser's wastewater to go to the Mount Shasta wastewater treatment plant, as you know. And the Regional Quality Control Board has recommended regionalization. That means that we don't want option three. And you guys don't want option three either. And neither does the board. And there is, I got you. There's one last piece. There's proof down at the Regional Quality Water Control Board that Crystal Geyser actually, the way I read this, is that they're actually not going to do a developers' agreement with you, that they're pushing right now hard to have option three.
Thank you.
You need to know that. Okay.
Thank you. Just a reminder, for those of you who may not have commented before, as we do ask you to stay within a three-minute timeframe, and we give you a yellow light as a reminder as your time is diminishing. Okay, Frances Mangels.
Original document I wish to present to the board is delayed until such time as the subject comes up again for a vote at a formal city meeting. So that is delayed until later. It concerns legal things that I'm not entirely well-versed on. So, winging it now, the drought, water conditions are now 17% of normal. I, as a consumer, object strongly that I should have to save my water and not use it, so it can be given to the Crystal Geyser Otsuka Japanese company. I note that the bottles are labeled in Japanese, and I wonder a lot about the ecological or economic subsidy that is being done internationally to ship Mount Shasta water to Japan. And meanwhile, my water gets cut short, so they can ship water to Japan. I've mentioned this before, that I have looked at the aquifer, with my background in hydrology and watershed, and you have seen this yourselves, that it is highly, I'll take that back. It is possible that the pollution by the factory, whether it goes onto the surface or into the leach field, or by leaking pipe, or whatever, it is possible for the groundwater pollution, which will result from the, from the Crystal Geyser factory, the soft, the drink manufacturing company, it is not a bottled water company. It is possible that the pollution from their site can make it to the high school well, and to the well at the junction of Washington Avenue, and I believe it's Lake Street? Yes. Washington and Lake. It is possible that pollution can occur to both of those sites. It does not look probable, from the main city water supply up at Howard, that the pollution from the Crystal Geyser factory will make the aquifer all the way to the, to the main city water supply. But nonetheless, without backup, I hope we don't wind up like Cape Town, South Africa. Because we are at 17% normal, and this is about the eighth year of a drought that is very likely to be permanent because of global warming factors. I realize that the local Republicans are calling this a hoax.
Thank you, Frances.
But 99.10, 99.9% of the scientists in the world disagree with that.
Thank you.
With Israel. Thank you very much.
Marnie Roth.
Speaking about something else, other than Crystal Geyser, but I know there's some really good-meaning people here speaking in opposition to it, so I'm going to talk about something else. All of you know, this past week has been a harrowing one for students and teachers all over our country. And we mourn yet another school massacre. And though it seems there's an inkling of a dialogue, I will not hold my breath, because it will, you know, that it will sustain itself, because we're a nation that doesn't learn too quickly from our mistakes. And I've been wondering until today, if our elected officials, you good folks, in Mount Shasta had gone to the high school, and other schools too, and discussed with students the most recent events of the past week or so. You hadn't. I had got my information today from school officials. I wanted to know if any of you had written any pieces in the paper regarding how you support our young people, and what you, as the leaders, intended to do, and if anything, to help our students and teachers to feel safe in their schools. And I guess I wanted also know, I wanted to also know, what are you doing, schools, you know, officials, to support upcoming national school walkout, which is March 24th, and if you're in alignment with these young hearts? And I didn't even know if students would be walking out in this town, like if this is the attitude of, can't happen here, it won't happen here, it doesn't happen here, we're not that kind of place, yada yah. What, if anything, are you asking of the public to help facilitate a dialogue in the community regarding legislation to change, you know, gun laws and, and common sense gun laws? What are you doing to expand mental health services to young people, and overall, you know, our whole community at large? I raise six kids, four of them are sons. I have eighth grandchild on the way, so this is really important to me, okay? What's unholding in our violent society? We seem to be unable to grapple with where we are going and why. We seem to turn away from the most difficult of conversations and change we need to make. Parkland will not be the last massacre, unfortunately. And, but the children, perhaps, you know, maybe they'll lead the way. I applaud them wholeheartedly for being the grownups, because we don't seem to have grownups leaders anymore. We have politicians who take a lot of money from NRA, which to me stands for Not Real Americans. I know, I realize, a lot of you are probably gun owners, but I'm not. And finally, I want to say, and this is on another point, I wasn't impressed with the speech that our mayor gave on January 20th downtown, imploring us to be nice to each other, and respectful, and kinder. This speech came on the heels of a year of hashtag me too. And I don't feel this was a very appropriate speech. I sort of had a WTF moment that day. I want to just say that women, and men, and our children must be taught to stand for some principles, for Christ's sakes, and being maligned, or abused, and basically ignored in our culture.
Thank you, Marnie.
Because no one will take them seriously.
Thank you very much.
So we need to fight back, change, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Axelrod.
The FEIR says that CG will use 10 times more water than all of the 82 neighboring residences combined. You would think that the city would be concerned about water depletion, and it is. The city's own official response to the DEIR states, quote, "The city's master water plan identifies a future well site in the vicinity of the Crystal Geyser facility. It does not appear that the DEIR addresses potential impacts of the project on the city's future municipal well or cumulative impacts associated with future well and residential development. The DEIR's conclusion that cumulative impacts to groundwater supply are less than significant is not supported, and the DEIR needs to be amended accordingly," unquote. Well, the city was essentially blown off. So the city quite properly commented on the final EIR, quote, "Hydrology and water quality needs to be re-analyzed, and a data collection program instituted to determine project impacts on the aquifer over time," unquote. So what can be done now? The mantra of one council member for four years has been that the city has no power in this matter. This pass-the-buck view is inaccurate. The city's own code, chapter 13, says, quote, "It shall be unlawful to extract groundwater underlying the city directly or indirectly for use of that groundwater outside the city or county boundaries, without first obtaining a permit," unquote. The FEIR clearly says that the water is heading south from CG, so that water does indeed underlie the city. There is a hydrologically senseless exception for water bottlers, but even that does not apply, because CG will be bottling flavored carbonated beverages and teas, not water. In addition, the city's own resolution, CCR 0522, states that a sewer connection permit may be issued for an out-of-area project only if the project is deemed, quote, "not clearly detrimental to the interests of the city," unquote. But the city has already voiced concerns about drying up their potential well sites. That is pretty detrimental, not to mention potential poisoning of the groundwater near its well with toxic industrial waste into a leach field. In that resolution, the city reserves the right to, quote, "comment on any other aspect of the project," unquote. The context makes it clear that the term "project" refers to the whole enterprise. The matter must be reviewed by the director of public works or the city engineer, but that's not the last word. The city reserves the power to judge whether the review process was, quote, "satisfactory," unquote. If the city correctly realizes that the review was not satisfactory, because it ignored clear detriments, again, the city has the power to withhold approval. One more sentence. I urge you to reread the recent letter from Water's lawyer to you, describing the legal options and responsibilities you have. You do have a choice, and your obligation is to the area's citizens-
Thank you, Dan.
-not to foreign multinational.
Bruce Hillman.
Bruce Hillman, Mount Shasta.
I think the decision to postpone this Agenda 8 was correct today. There's a lot of issues involved in this permit that need to be studied in depth by both the city council, the city staff, and the community. And I would hope Bruce Pope's letter, email, to number of community organizations and individuals stated that there might be some, a big opportunity to have some public hearings before the city council meeting, to get viewpoints and analysis of the newly revised permit before it comes before the city council. Because I think there's a lot of information, both our experts, our lawyers, and the community at large would like to have input into, rather than just three minutes, with a couple of days before the agenda point, to study a rather complex document. So I think some public hearings, or meetings with different groups, so we can get our, have a chance to analyze the new permit as it's amended, and give you our comments and thoughts, would, I think, really facilitate a proper analysis of this rather important document. And, you know, as Marsha Birch said in the letter to the city council and to city staff, that to comply with SEQA, a responsible agency, and that is the city, must consider the final EIR prepared by the lead agency, and reach its own conclusions on whether and how to approve the project involved. The city must adopt mitigation measures designed to mitigate or avoid the direct or indirect environmental effects of those parts of the project that it decides to approve. She goes on to state that all of the shortcomings pointed out during the county's review of the project persist, and the impacts related to wastewater treatment were not adequately reviewed or mitigated by the county. So unlike when I had a discussion with the mayor during one of her breakfast meetings, which I think are a great idea, she mentioned that she felt like her hands, you know, that she didn't have the ability to stop the use of the leach field in the permit process. And I would like to say that the city does have the ability, and in fact, almost the responsibility, to not allow that leach field to be used because of the potential for groundwater contamination. And that is just one small part of some of the issues that the city has raised. And I hope you will take this opportunity and this time to really stand forward and stand up for the environment and the people of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. John Kennedy.
John Kennedy, in Mount Shasta, lived here for most of my life. It's hard for me to believe that, we've been going at this for five years here, and we get down to the final little plan to get this project moving, and we have to delay it. I think this is the third time that we've delayed this thing. It would seem like between one meeting and the next, that we could get some of this, these things ironed out, so we could have a permit that we could issue to Crystal Geyser to get this project going. I agree with Paul Ingström about the fact that we need to keep this thing moving here, and get it done as soon as we can. If you keep drawing it out, pretty soon, from what I understand, Crystal Geyser has the right to use the leach field, and why not, why not just go ahead and open up and use that leach field? Then we'll be out, not only the idea that wastewater will be going down to the wastewater treatment plant, but the other thing is, the income that the city's going to end up losing, the $1.4 million to fix the infrastructure, and the $60,000 a year that you're going to get in fees. Thank you. I want to make sure that you guys get this thing on the agenda and get moving again. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Vicki Gold, please. And if there are others of you who would like to speak, please be prepared to come up quickly. Thank you.
Vicki Gold, Mount Shasta. I concur with everything that Raven, and Bruce, and Dan said. I think, I want to thank you very much for postponing this. I think it was a very wise decision to heed the advice of your county, of your city attorney. And I think it's far better to have it correct, and take a little longer to do a good job in really handling all of the issues that are bound to come up with this project. We know it's taken a long time, but it really, I have to say, the letter that I just saw from Marsha Birch, I completely agree with. I think you have tremendous responsibility and opportunity to really look at all of the details that, a couple of you, I think, you know, Councilman Sterns and Engstrom, were so sure that there would be a developers' agreement that would come out of consultation, private meetings with Crystal Geyser attorneys, council representing them, and with the county. And we haven't seen any of those developers' agreements. We know that in the city of Orland, before Crystal Geyser moved here, there were developers' agreements mentioned. That was before they were required to do the EIR, and there was the two lawsuits about the EIR. But we know that those developers' agreements can cover some of the costs for the city. We really feel that that's the most important thing. And I think, what I, what I recall from what Dan Axelrod said at the last hearing, I'd like to mention the whole concept of the penalty of being only $6,000 for the criminal fines, and $1,000 for the civil fines, I believe, per day. Doesn't even need to be per day. And this is just, this makes no sense. Because if a corporation that is a $35 billion capitalized corporation can make $300,000, let's say it's only $100,000 a day, which we know is not true, from what we've seen with one line, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that we, I think if we had public hearings, we would have an opportunity to hear from Crystal Geyser what their profits would be. But that penalty should be approximately what their profits would be for that day. That would make sense. Otherwise, it's just cost of doing business. I think for them to have an impound account, an interest-bearing impound account, to guarantee that everything would be handled, you would just withdraw from that as the infrastructure was added, makes absolute sense, and I really encourage you to tighten that up. I'm very grateful that this has been postponed. I would like very much to have an opportunity to speak at greater length than three minutes with the community. And I'm appreciative that this was delayed, and I think it's very appropriate. It'll be a much better permit, once we have had that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I saw him first, you're next. Please share your name.
Rod Hammer, Mount Shasta here. City council members, you're here to, been elected to represent us, to look after the interests of our interests in our city. And actually, in a simple way you could say, it would be, put Mount Shasta first. Your decisions affect all of our lives, children's lives, not only here in the city, or in the surrounding community, but even south of us. And what Crystal Geyser, the water company, wants to do- And what Crystal Geyser, the water company, wants to do, is they want corporate welfare at the expense of the citizens of the city here. They want to use a sewer system that the city has that is not designed to remove chemical toxicities. And I mentioned earlier here about leach field, Crystal Geyser can use a leach field. I don't believe that EPA would stand for that because leach field does not remove toxic chemicals that is used in the manufacturing of the watering bottling plant. Nor does the sewer system designed to take toxic chemicals out. Goes downstream, toxic down below, as well as if they use a leach field, it contaminates the water table. Now, they have the money. Don't give them a permit. Why should we be burdened with the expense, the consequences after that? They got the money, they could put a million-dollar plan in there to take all the toxicity out of the water. There's profit in it, they're in there for the business, you know? But why should Mount Shasta be giving them corporate welfare at our expenses? Actually, the city council should have the attitude of Mount Shasta first. What benefits Mount Shasta? Does the water plant really benefit the city? It doesn't. You're going to have a new highway here probably in three years with the max load capacity of the semis going through here. You're going to have to rebuild the roadway here. Who's going to pay for that? You're going to get the money from the tax revenue, from selling gas? Those trucks aren't buying gas locally, they're buying it up in Oregon, or they're buying it down south where it's cheaper. They should put up a bond, multi-billion-dollar bond, so that we don't be burdened with the expense of having that in, or the county having that in, you know? This is what happens, you hear a lot about corporate welfare, and this is an example of it. Here, they come in here, "Oh, we want to use your sewer system because we flush our toilet in our restrooms." Bullshit. That isn't the situation. Yes, I know, it's green before I even started, too.
Thank you very much, sir. That's it, sir. Thank you.
But anyway, your decisions that you make is your real intentions, not what you say, but what you do.
My name is Patricia Osborne, and I'm a resident and a vested community member in Mount Shasta. I'm relocated here when population was decreasing. I raised my three children here. My husband's a coach. We own a business, we hire five people. I'm a public health nurse. I'm really invested in this community as a whole, and I want you guys to do this right. We, as a community, have one shot to do this right. We need to take our time. I thank you so much for that opportunity. And I speak highly of an open forum where we can have more discussion because I think that we're giving you valuable input. I want to stay in this community. My kids are away at college getting big degrees. I want them to come back and want to live in this community. I cherish this community. But I am afraid of a leach field above the headwaters. I'm afraid of losing my well, that I pay $7,000 to filter my own water so I can drink it. You know, I'm concerned about the minimum wind tubes AB-52 rights over the headwaters' purity and their consideration of the native people that came before me. There's a lot of this project that, things need to be clear. We only have one shot. We can do this, and we can do it right.
Rosalyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. I would like to thank Bruce for really doing a good job and seeing that this application is not complete. I would ask that you include how much Crystal Geyser is going to pay for their hookup and approximately how much they will be paying for their monthly fees. As far as I understand, the hookup charges are going to go directly into the pipes, the interceptor pipes, that have to be expanded due to their project. And the city had told them when they first started talking about coming to town that a large section had to be upgraded to accommodate their project. Now, that has been shortened down to a very small area near Ream Avenue, as far as I understand. And that cost should not come out of their connection fee. As I sent you an email, when my house was built, that I bought into this system. It wasn't just exclusively for my own pipes, my own use that was required from me, but I bought into the system. They also need to buy into the system. We have to upgrade the sewer plant. They also should be throwing in extra funds to make sure that that sewer plant is capable of handling their affluent. And when I stand up here for my short three minutes before you, I really wish that I felt like I was being heard, but when I see city council members doing email on their phones and paperwork, I don't feel like that. And when I hear my fellow citizens come up here and share really important information, and I continue seeing this lack of attention, I really question, why would you choose to sit there and do paperwork? It's only three minutes, and we're not coming to your doors saying, "Spend hours with me" because we have this short amount of time together for the whole community and you to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Jill Harris, Crystal Geyser. Our understanding is that the issues that were presented to the city for clarification, they are minor issues in the permit that we are asking for clarification on. It was our hope that they would be deliberated and discussed and resolved at this meeting tonight. So while we are disappointed that that's not the case, we hope and support the city in any efforts to conclude this process in the most concise manner possible. The EIR process started, I think we're nearing a year and a half. So the opportunity for comment and questions and discussions has been applied appropriately. The EIR has been certified, and the city accepted it. So what we're just asking is that we can move forward as quickly as possible. We do understand that the letter received by the city from Marsha Birch potentially raised some issues that the city needs some extra time to resolve, and we understand that, we accept it. But again, the minor clarifications that are being requested in the permit should be able to be resolved quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who would like to comment? Yes.
Mike Brown, Mount Shasta. So I'm sitting here listening to this tonight, and when I get, everybody's entitled to their opinion. The stuff, the factual stuff, I understand it. You guys are going to go through that. You've been handed down the information from the EIR, and that's, I think, what we need to judge on. You know, Raven had some things they want to clarify it up, just what Jill said. They just want some things cleared up. But what I see, everybody's so fearful of this pollution thing. How many of these people live in the country, in the county, and use leach lines? And there's wells right next door to them. I mean, to me, it's kind of a reality check thing. Come on, I own property right below that plant. Jimmy owns property below the plant. I own property above that plant. I think the reality is they're going to do the right thing. I think the information's there. We've had, how much time? What I'm a little stumped about is that why wasn't this brought up sooner? If we knew this was coming down the pipe for the hookup, then I guess what, we didn't get on board to start throwing this around sooner so we could kind of get those questions out there before. That's what I'm a little stumped about. So, anyway, that's my opinion. We all got one. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, please? Yes.
Larry Stock, Mount Shasta. The SEQA process is probably one of the most comprehensive in the entire world. Let the process do what it's designed to do. It's a, process is litigated. The city of Mount Shasta's job is not to raise the bar above SEQA. The job is to get this thing going. They've passed all of the requirements. It's been approved. It's not our turn to raise the bar again and rewrite all environmental laws. They've done, it's passed all the tests. Get it going.
Thank you. Other comments, please? Okay, well, I thank you very much for attending tonight, taking your time to share with us your heartfelt concerns on all sides. I'd like to move now to council and staff comments. You, of course, are welcome to join us for the remainder of the meeting. In fact, you know, I think, let's take a five-minute break to allow those of you who are leaving to do so quickly and quietly. Thank you. Bruce, have you any comments for us?
Well, other than the working on trying to clarify the Crystal Geyser permit, I think that's pretty much occupied staff's time over the last week or so. But I think the council truly made the proper decision in continuing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff comment?
So I just want to announce, we have two upcoming workshops that are part of the general plan and natural disaster hazard mitigation planning process. For those who aren't familiar, we are federally required to have a local hazard mitigation plan to receive federal funds as well as Cal OES funds in case of emergencies. We get hazard mitigation, disaster recovery, which we did get a little bit this past year. Our plan expired last November, so hopefully nothing happens. But, so we're going to be doing some public input next week. We'll have an evening workshop next Wednesday beginning at 6:00 PM, and it's going to be at the dance hall here at City Park, which is on the other side of the parking lot behind this building. And then Thursday all day is going to be a professional, more technical-based workshop. Both of these are open to the public. The second day is going to be more focused on a vulnerability assessment of some of the issues we have here with natural disasters. And then in the afternoon that Thursday, we're actually going to be focusing on wildfire hazard mitigation and disaster issues. It is, like I said, it's open to the public. All of this information will be used in our hazard mitigation plan as well as the safety element for our general plan revision. So we really encourage people to attend, and if they have any concerns about natural disasters, man-made disasters, including train wrecks, things like that, we'll be talking about all of those.
Thank you. I look forward to it. I enjoyed the ads you put in the paper also. Anything else, Muriel? No? Okay. Council comments. Tim?
No, actually, a question. You said there was a workshop coming up on general plan as well?
Those are part of the general plan, so those are part of the safety requirement. We're doing those a little bit earlier than like a visioning-type thing, which we'll have later. We have some visioning aspects into these, but we got some free technical assistance from FEMA, EPA, and the Association of Bay Area Governments, so we're trying to work with their schedule and ours. So this is a little bit earlier than I typically would like, but I'm not going to look gift horse in the mouth.
Yeah, Julianne, I know you had that local hazard mitigation plan on your to-do list, and you were hoping to meet that November deadline last year, and obviously you've been very busy. Is this meeting coming up is going to help finalize that plan for you?
So the way our hazard mitigation plan is set up is we are part of a joint jurisdictional plan, so we have to wait until the county gets their end done before we can actually do our side. And the county's been a little behind as well. The county's Cal OES individual who's in charge of that was hired around the same time I was and didn't realize that we had a due date coming up, and I think I was the one who actually told him that we had a due date coming up. But, so we have to wait for the county to do certain aspects, and then we just update our section of that plan. And then what'll happen is after that, the county will pass out a draft, and I basically just go through the draft and say, yes, this is good, this meets everything. The county has to approve the final, and then we'll approve a final. So it'll come to council eventually, but I have to wait for the county to get some of their stuff organized. And some of that is also due to the other jurisdictions part of that plan. I believe there's nine total jurisdictions that are part of this plan, so we have to coordinate quite a bit. So we got pushed back a little bit, but we're hoping to get it approved. I think, I just had a meeting with them. We're expecting a draft by May, so we'll hopefully have the finals done by July, is our hope.
Thank you.
Another question?
Yes.
Julianne, I heard that Alan Calder is leaving and that an assistant planner...
I can't hear you, Tim. Sorry. Will you?
I heard that the community development director, Alan Calder, is leaving and also an assistant planner.
Senior. Senior planner.
Senior planner.
Yep.
I think they only had three, maybe four, in the office. How is that going to affect us?
Actually, we're pretty fortunate because the county has hired a, for history, the county has had issue with planning turnover in their offices. When I was hired, the entire planning department pretty much left. So they've been rebuilding their department. Their community development director leaves this week. The senior planner's been gone two weeks now. But fortunately, they have hired a deputy planning director who she and I have already met quite a few times and actually coordinated on one of the action items tonight. So she's still there, and we're still in contact, and we've still got a very good relationship. We hope to have our first quarterly meeting this year in March.
Council comments.
I just can't let it go. I was offended by the foul language tonight that one of the speakers used. This is not a place for that, no matter how angry you are. It's a place to communicate ideas and your feelings, and there's a way to do it, and there's a way not to. And I thought that was pretty juvenile and pretty, grown men don't act that way. I'm just going to say that. I'm going to leave it at that. Also accused of not doing anything yet on the children who were killed, making an assumption that we don't care, that we're not doing anything. I'm highly offended by that comment. How does that woman know what we are doing or what we're not doing? Because we sit here, she makes an assumption that we have certain feelings, and that just isn't right. You know, I work with kids every single day, and how dare she come into this arena and make those accusations? People wonder why we get upset sometimes. And if they're going to throw it at me, I'm going to throw it right People wonder why we get upset sometimes, and if they're going to throw it at me, I'm going to throw it right back. There's no excuse for that. That's all.
Thank you, Paul. Others?
I guess I want to respond to that because we are a country that believes in free speech, and I believe people are free to express themselves how they want to express themselves. And I think it's up to the council to have the maturity to understand that these are not personal attacks. These are, these are owned by the person speaking at the microphone. They, they own those statements, they own those feelings. They're not superimposing on them, on you. If you want to take them on, that's your choice. So, I think that there's also maturity called on the part of a council member to accept public opinion as it comes, as free speech is allowed in this country.
I am the first one to believe in free speech, and I just gave my free speech right there. I am going to, if I'm accused of something, I'm going to respond. I'm not going to let people assume that that's the way I feel. And I, you know, I, I'm the first one to believe in free speech, the First Amendment. And for people to assume that I'm some other way, I have to make a clarification. And I just did that.
Understood. Thank you. John, have you got anything?
Well, following on what Paul just said, whether it has to do with the city council or cities' responsibilities regarding Crystal Geyser or our responsibilities regarding child safety at schools, it seems that the, the audience and members of this community look to the city council and the individuals on the city council to perform tasks and take on projects that really are not within our realm of responsibility or in our jurisdiction in many cases. I can only say that if they're interested in knowing us better, I can try and contact us. I just ran a 14-week ice rink season concluded on Sunday, and there were no violent events at all. And there were a lot of kids there all the time, including school groups. So, like Paul, I'm involved with organizing and doing things with kids, and things have gone quite well for many years. So, that's my comment.
Thank you.
And in response to that, I think it's also important for us to educate the, the public on what councils do and what they don't do. And we are looked to as the leadership role that we're holding. They are looking to us for leadership, so I, I don't fault them for that, so.
Tim? Anything? No? Okay. One comment I'd like to make is the, is the speech I delivered at the march that was referred to was one where what I emphasized, for those of you who are listening, was the power of choice, that we, that we each have accountability, and we can choose to put what incredible free choice we have into any number of things that we care about. And I encourage people to volunteer, to do those things that really make a difference in their lives and in, in others' lives. I stand by that, and I also stand by people's rights to stand by what they believe in. I like an engaged community and intend to continue to engaging with you. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move now to the consent agenda. It's my pleasure to read the items. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or hereto added shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes February 5th, 2018 special city council meeting, and February 12th, 2018 regular city council meeting. B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 2/7, 2/14, and 2/15, 18. Total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending 2/11, 18. C, monthly financial investment report. D, approval of USDA funding for the sewer replacement project. And that is a resolution 18-09 in your packets. And E, sale of city parcel CCR-18-10, also sent separately in your email. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve the consent agenda with one minor correction on the February 12 minutes. It says that I attended a film festival. I think it's important to note that it was a Siskiyou Film Festival relating to our wild, wild area, both South Oregon and North California. So, if you could just add the word Siskiyou Film Festival, so it just doesn't sound like I'm just going around and just having fun around town, so.
Is there a second?
Second with corrections.
All those in favor of the motion with "as amended"?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Unanimous approval. Thank you. We wouldn't want to be having any fun while we're doing this.
Not only.
Okay, then, we're skipping item number eight, as discussed previously, and moving now to item number nine, discussion regarding short-term rentals in the county within the city's sphere of influence. Juliana?
Great. Thank you. So, I was contacted by the Community Development Division Department at Siskiyou County regarding vacation rentals, which we refer to as short-term rentals here in the city. They had a situation where previously in 2003, noted in your staff report, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution not allowing vacation rentals on residential parcels 2.5 acres or less in the city's sphere of influence. They requested some background information as to City of Mount Chasta's reasoning for support for that or discussion on that. Based on my digging around, there was no discussion at the city council during those times. I looked at quite a few different meeting minutes, and there was really nothing mentioned. There was no recorded resolution for support or against that. I did take a look at the 1993 general plan, which would have been in effect at that time, and there was some support to maintain resource land, which is what the 1993 general plan had zoned most of the sphere of influence. And resource land is to protect economic interest in mining agribusiness timber production. And then there's also rural residential, which is to protect low-density, single-family living from expanding subdivisions. It really emphasized rural living at the time and maintaining farm situations. So, that was the only thing I could base that on, is maybe there was some communication between the planner or city manager at the time that the 1993 general plan did not support more commercialized businesses such as vacation rentals. But I, I basically told them that there was no support from the city council at that time or since. Based on a review of our current general plan, the sphere of influence is zoned exactly the same way. The general plan land use now uses a standard for rural residential with a density of one unit per 2.5 acres, which is probably where they saw that. That is from the Siskiyou County Health Department policy. And so, maybe they looked at that and said, you know, there's only supposed to be one unit per 2.5 acres, therefore, we want it to be residential. But again, I can't speak to what the formal decision was. And just to clarify with the city council and the public, short-term rentals are lightly regulated, and I included the specific definition on page 170 of your packets. And then just reemphasized, this was pretty much verbatim what I shared with the Board of Supervisors packet and the County Development Department, that the city basically just prohibits short-term rentals in R1 low-density zoning, requires them to have business licenses, and pay taxes. Basically, the, the city's short-term direction, as per our last discussions during the Housing Discovery Report, there's really no language in the general plan or other planning documentations to either support or deny doing vacation rentals on 2.5 acres or less. So, the recommendation at the time of the Housing Discovery Report was to continue through the revision of the general plan so that we can get a better understanding of, of what direction we'd like to go. So, my recommendation for today to the city council, based on a conversation with the Siskiyou County Planning Department, city staff supports the planning practice of taking short-term rental applications on a case-by-case basis in the sphere of influence. And actually, that's, I actually got one today from the county already about a vacation rental in our sphere of influence. So, typically, what happens in a case-by-case is that the county will schedule it for the Planning Commission, and any planning activity that's in the sphere of influence for the city that goes to Planning Commission, I get notified, and then I can check our general plan and planning documents as far as, you know, whether that should or shouldn't be supported, so.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Juliana?
So, they still have it as not allowed in property under two and a half acre?
So, there's a challenge, I believe, right now. I don't believe they're going to court. I believe what they're doing is they're doing the case-by-case Planning Commission consideration for the properties in question that triggered this whole thing. Right now, they've lifted, that is my understanding, because it was a resolution and not an ordinance. So, it was never codified. It was just more of a, this is our city policy, which is inappropriate for a prohibition like that.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, this presentation you've made is in regard to properties outside the city limits, correct?
Correct.
So, we're not talking about internal city codes?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Barbara? Do you have anything?
Yeah. Just clarification. So, when you said Planning Commission, are you talking county Planning Commission?
Correct.
Tim?
I don't have any questions.
We want one per five acre, five square. I don't care. It's really up to you. It's, it's up to your comfort level. When I respond to things, I always look at the general plan, because the general plan is the public document that was put together by community input that you guys confirm. So, when I get a letter like that, I take a look at the location, I take a look at our general plan, and I respond with, this is what it is, here's what we recommend. So, that gives you an insight to, when I write a letter, that's where I go. As far as hard data versus intuition, that's basically my statement about short-term rentals, is we don't have the hard data yet. We plan on addressing that in the general plan revision, getting that, that data to say how many numbers of short-term versus long-term rentals, getting a better idea of the conversion factor from short-term to long-term rental, taking a look at that. And then as far as fines, the, the county does fine short-term rentals similar to ours is, so what we do is when we get a report of an illegal short-term rental, for example, I got three addresses last week. Our finance department looks into it because it is technically tax evasion, because they're not paying their transient occupancy tax. So, we do send them letters and notifications, and we have gone after people who do not pay their taxes or business license or have been operating illegally. So, we, we do actively do that, just to address that, that piece. Let's see. I think I addressed all nine of your concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, how we use the data, like I said, we'll look at the data, we'll do some public input, as well as looking at the Housing Discovery Report, and then we'll translate that into the general plan. So, we use that to inform our policy decisions.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. And I did get that you, of course, you go back to historical documents in the Constitution general plan. I, I just, I, I wonder if, if I could conclude from your statements here that you're comfortable waiting till the general plan comes out, or you, you want to do some surveying in anticipation of that, but until the general plan comes out to really address any housing shortage that we have, or is there, is, is there any acknowledgement on your part that we have kind of an urgent situation? And if, if we don't do something short of that, I mean, what, what could we do without, that's within our jurisdiction and that wouldn't completely sidetrack you off your general plan priorities?
Basically, the recommendations you approved in the Housing Discovery Report. I mean, frankly, the regulation of short-term rentals, if, if you got rid of every single short-term rental in the City of Mount Chasta, that would not fix your long-term housing issue. Frankly, it wouldn't. You know, that's why we recommended a series of recommendations in the Housing Discovery Report, because it's not just one thing.
Sure.
And you know, the city council is more than, you're, you're more than able to recommend changes to the short-term rental policy now. You can do that. You know, that, like I said, that would take me off track, because that wasn't something we've already anticipated. But, like I said, we, we are going to try very hard to get a handle on this and make a good recommendation. If you want it sooner than that, that's a discussion you pretty much have to have with the city manager, because that would take me off task. But, you know, I think for right now, I think continuing with the recommendations in the Housing Discovery Report is, is going to get you in a better direction to solve your long-term housing issues. You know, like I said, you, you guys are free to prohibit short-term rentals or require that they get a permit and do all of that, but I don't think that's going to solve your problem.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting that we do that. That's wading into a whole different can of worms, but other comments from other council members? Thank you, Juliana.
Just a little bit of history about the rural county area around Mount Chasta. I mean, we have some RR properties that are one and a half acres, Douglas Lane off Alassen Lane. We have some that are, that are acres in Timber Hills. I mean, they were developed a long time ago when people didn't think there was a problem with a septic and a well on a half-acre parcel. So, the county went up to acre lots because of that. And then they went up to two and a half acre lots. So, we have a real mix of, just so you know how the zoning happened, I've been around the county a long time, and I, I've seen that new subdivisions were in, you know, they required larger and larger lots because of the septic and wells.
And it's all rural residential then?
Most of it's RR, yeah, which used to be, you could have chickens and a horse and things like that. And you still can, yeah. But that's why, because it was in the country. Another thing is, is, you know, we're, we have a catch-22. It's a tourism economy that we're developing here, and we make money on TOT taxes. And I understand that we need, we need housing, but we also should look at encouraging some vacation rentals in certain locations. But, but I understand the points of why it would be limited. But if you're going to limit the amount of vacation rentals, okay, you can have it, cut it off, well, why can't I have it? It's called property rights and discrimination. It's something that I think we have to be very careful about. I would be upset if I was a property owner and the guy next door had a vacation rental, but I couldn't get a vacation rental in, because, oops, got enough already. You know, it's, what is it going to be, a lottery system? So, I think we just have to, we have to be careful about that. And as far as the unlicensed vacation rentals, there's a ton of them out there. Ton of them. And I think we just have to be more energetic in trying to find them, you know, because we're losing revenue. So, I don't know. It's a whole question that's going to come up for debate again, because what are we going to be, a tourist economy? Are we going to just, we just want long-term rentals? I mean, that goes against the premise of being a tourist town. So, I mean, we've got a lot of, a lot of things that we've got to really discuss, so.
Yeah. I understand. And I understand that the general plan elements all need, will, will hopefully integrate all these different aspects. Other comments?
Yeah. In the report, there is a sentence that says, "City council consideration would be needed prior to city input into the county ordinance." So, it sounds like an invitation for conversation. What I'd like to see in the definition of short-term rental is distinction between having entire property rented as opposed to a portion of a unit rented, because when you're only renting out for short-term a portion, you could have someone, a community member living there renting out a room. That's a very different situation and not threatening to your long-term rental availability as is when a short-term rental, when, when people come into the community and just buy up properties for investment purposes solely. And... come into the community and just buy up properties for investment purposes solely, and only want to rent those out for short-term rentals. So I think that it's important to distinguish between those two situations, but they fall under the same definition. That's, maybe we could come up with two different terms for those.
I think Paul and Barbara Blake, good points. The, we can, this is on the agenda because the county asked us for our input, as to what the county should do in terms of short-term rentals outside city limits, but in the sphere. While the county may be trying to encourage agricultural tourism on farms and ranches, I don't see that as a threat to our housing stock, long-term housing stock in the Mount Shasta area. So I don't see any problem, and they're going ahead and promoting that, that's a different situation. And that kind of falls into what Barbara was saying, is you have somebody who's a rancher or a farmer, they're living on the property, they invite people in. That's a different situation than converting that house that used to be available for long-term rental to vacation rental, seasonal rental, and taking it off the housing market, taking away from the stock. So I would like to move, and I hope the council will support a motion that... Yeah, we haven't had public comment yet. All right.
Discussion happens after public comment, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Juliana. Yes, public comment, please. Jim?
Jim Cross, I'm a resident, city limits of Mount Shasta. As I listen to you talk about this, you know, the gentleman said earlier, "It's Mount Shasta first," and I think that's correct. But I think what you're talking about here is, how can we limit free enterprise? How can we control a short-term rental situation? People, this is a new world. This is the biggest industry, probably nationwide, countrywide, right now, is short-term rental, recreational short-term rental. You look at Park City, Utah, one of the richest communities that I know of, that I've ever visited, and it's a robust business. It generates income for the city. You're not going to, you're not going to invite anybody to the city to want to live here if you exclude them from coming and experiencing it. I mean, you're sitting here, and to me, I told John, I says, "It sounds like they're trying to regulate free enterprise in the town of Mount Shasta. That's not what you're about." We need to have a community that's inclusive, and this is one way to do it. It's, the healthier Mount Shasta is, the more chance you're going to have for building constructions, homes, townhouses, condos, et cetera, to, as, to answer your question on short-term. But you should, in your mind, separate a short-term rental against a recreational short-term rental, because these people come to town, they have lots of money. Rotary, we do a bike ride, people come to town, they're looking for places to stay. They spend anywhere from $500 to $1,000 a day while they're here, and they're here two or three days. Short-term rental would accomplish this. Don't limit your exposure to this as a negative. It's a positive for our community. It's, we need something, if we want our kids to come back to town, we need a reason for them to come back to town. And the only way you're going to get people to build in Mount Shasta is get enough revenue, so your sewer hookups, your water hookups, all this is feasible to build. Because if you really want to look at why your housing isn't such a bad problem, there's nobody can afford to build here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? John?
John Kennedy. I don't have a real strong feeling either way, as to whether to have long-term or short-term rentals or that. But I'm getting ready to build a duplex here, probably one of the first ones in a long, long time here. And to get that thing insured, it's going to cost me quite a bit of money. To get it built, it's going to cost me quite a bit of money. And right now, it's a duplex, and it's going to, probably going to rent for $1,300 to $1,400 a month. What has happened is, our prices in this community have gone up so high, people from the Bay Area, or wherever they're coming from, are investing in this community, not really living here, but have a house here, and they're using those for short-term rentals. And to me, there's nothing really wrong with it, because of what Jim said, Paul said, they spend money here. You get TOT tax in. You know, they spend at the service station, they go out to eat. You know, it's just, our problem with housing being built is it's just too darn expensive. And it's not just us that's having that problem with the cost of building a house around here. I mean, everybody's, all the towns in California and Oregon, I think they're starting to experience that, too, like Medford and that. They're trying to solve their problem, short-term, or not short-term rentals, but housing. So anyway, you've got to look at what the benefit is to the city, and I think Jim probably hit it more than I can, about, you know, what happens when we have tourists come in and stay at our short-term rental. Anyway, that's all I got to say. You got a tough decision, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, John. Other comments? I'd like to comment that what you say has been part of our discussion for quite a while. The housing discovery process was one where we concluded much of the same thing. What I recall is that two years ago, two or three years ago, I guess it's been, when the short-term rental discussion came up for council discussion, some of you may remember that I was in the minority of supporting short-term rental expansion into R1, for the very reasons that two gentlemen in our audience have stated tonight. Since that time, a lot of communities are struggling more and more with maintaining a quality of life that many have come to the community to experience. And in our very mission, I mean, this may be changing as a result of our general plan, but our mission says, our mission is to maintain the character of our small-town community while striking an appropriate balance between economic development and preservation of our quality of life. And that, I think, is at the crux of what you're describing, John, as the complexity of the issue. It is a complex issue. And I, the only thing I was, and I don't, I don't pretend to have an answer right now. We're not debating what we want to do in Mount Shasta right now. I'm not suggesting we get back into reevaluating the short-term rental issue. What I, what I am suggesting is that we let the county know that we do have, as, that we do have a housing shortage, one aspect of which could be related to short-term rentals. And that, if they can find a way on a case-by-case basis to evaluate the continuing impact on, in our sphere of influence, I would appreciate that. Any kind of, any numbers that, any kind of data they may have to support our understanding would be appreciated.
And what the data is showing in cities like New York and San Francisco is that the locals are being priced out. They're getting booted out of their neighborhoods, because they no longer can afford the rents. And that's what's happening here. We have young children who've graduated here, gone off to college and come back, and they can't find a place to rent that's affordable. And that's what sometimes this short-term rental situation creates, is that an investor will come in and buy a home, and certainly be able to make a lot more money renting it on a short-term than long-term. And so what you're doing is, you do face a decreased housing market when you start allowing those short-term rentals to come in. And so what, when I was on Planning Commission a few years ago, we offered to council to consider short-term rental in R1, we said, "Condition it so that there's a caretaker on site." So you have, you preserve your local population, your local neighborhood feel, and you allow for short-term rentals, but you have someone on site to manage that property, to make, if there's any hassles, they care for the situation, any wild parties, they manage those. It's a compromise, but it also maintains community.
So we have a motion on the floor, which I frankly can't remember.
We didn't, because it didn't get stated.
Any more, is there, are we done with public comments? Sorry, Tim. Okay, Tim?
Before making any motion, let me indicate that it is a balancing act, providing revenue to the city in TOT. That's a good thing. Providing housing for people who live here and who work here, also an essential thing. So it's a balancing act. And we have, if it goes over too far in one direction, it's detrimental. Tahoe last year talked about the problems that they have with vacation rentals, that that's making it so, it's good for taxes, but it's making it so that people have a hard time finding a place to rent in that area and living in that area. And so they have to move outside and then commute. Also, in recent months, I don't know if it was San Francisco or one of the other cities, has changed their policy in terms of Airbnb, and says, "Airbnb fine, as long as the owner is still living there," the sort of thing that Councilmember Wagner was saying. They're cutting out this idea of investing in property solely for vacation rentals, because it's taking away from housing market. So trying to find that balance. Free market, yes, but it has to have some regulatory process also. So I would, I would move that the council indicate its position to Board of Superfactors, that because we currently have a housing crisis, a housing shortage in the Mount Shasta area, that we are not supportive of short-term rentals on properties two and a half acres or less in our sphere of influence.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I would modify that to make sure that the short-term rental is defined as the living unit, and not a portion. Those are two different definitions.
And I accept that. What you're saying is, without the owner living there and renting out a portion.
So I would add to your motion, say, "But we do support when a portion..."
Fine, I accept that amendment.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Nay. Oh.
Is there some other direction that you want to give the county, some other assistance?
Yes, I'd like to, I would like to move that we send a letter that indicates that perhaps we could share the results of our housing discovery process, indicating that we do have a housing shortage, that we understand that short-term rentals are a piece of that, that we would appreciate knowing the numbers in our sphere of influence. And I'm requesting data, and, and continue with a case-by-case basis, and let them understand that we will be evaluating this in our general plan, and sooner if an emergency arises. But I would fall short of saying, "I don't want to see anything on, on, because of the points that have been raised here, on, in their, on land that they manage outside, in our sphere."
When you say "case-by-case" basis, Mayor, I don't know what that means. Is that, that each time the county has a application, that it will come to city council? Because what I hear, what I hear our planner saying is, she'd look at the general plan, and if the general plan doesn't say anything about it, she would simply indicate that to the county.
Yeah, I'm not, I am... Yeah, that's what I heard Juliana say, that she would refer to documents.
So it's basically, why don't we just simply say, "Our general plan doesn't say anything?"
We would communicate the land use designation, which we do typically with use permits, and say whether that land use description supports or does not support that.
But if it's RR?
Yep. We would say that our general plan, I think I did put in here as the background, I think the RR is similar from our 1993, we just say the RR supports lots 2.5 acres or larger for the health code, and then we would say that it's for low-density residential with some hobby farming and light agricultural uses.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's essentially saying nothing. It's really saying nothing. But I'm not comfortable asking them to preclude something that we ourselves haven't precluded in R1. Why, why would we ask them to do something that we haven't decided to do within our own city limits?
Well, we exclude short-term rental in R1, right?
We, we, yes, yes, I, I, yes, that's what I meant. We exclude short-term rental only in R1, but not throughout the rest of the city. So...
Would council members be agreeable to indicating that, that we would be supportive of and would be in favor of that sort of restriction for the county, the same sort of restriction that we've placed on ourselves?
You know, it's in the county. It's kind of, what does the county want to do with that? What kind of revenues they want to generate from their places in the county? I don't care if it's a half acre or 10 acres. To me, that doesn't matter for vacation rental. I just think that if the county wants vacation rentals, they should be able to do it. And that, that's just the way I feel. If Mount Shasta wants to do vacation rentals, we should be able to do it. I mean, that's their, we may be in a sphere of influence, but I just, I feel uncomfortable setting regulations for the county. I just feel uncomfortable doing that. I, I think, I'm in support of vacation rentals if it's approved by people within 300 feet. If that's what the neighborhood wants, that's what the neighborhood should be able to get. I mean, I see rentals that are, people have been in there two years, and they look like hell. I see vacation rentals, and they're usually kept up pretty darn well. I mean, that's another subject we have to look at. I would just say that we recommend that county do what they want to do. That would be my recommendation.
With no, and you're not, so you're not comfortable asking for them to keep us up to date on the number within our sphere of influence?
No, I'm not.
No?
It sounds like it's a missed opportunity for relationship building, though. If indeed they asked us for input, is that what you said? If indeed they asked us for input, and we say, "Just do what you want," it seems like we're returning down an offer for bridge building.
I totally understand what you're saying, but my point is, is that we, it's your sphere, it's our sphere of influence, yes, but it's, it's in the county, it's your tax sphere. If that's what you'd like to do, then we're going to support you. That's a relationship right there. Instead of us trying to control kind of what they're doing, I think we ought to just let them do what they want to do. No restrictions.
And we're looking for affordable housing for the people who work there?
I totally, I totally understand that. But I don't think that that's the way to bring in affordable housing. I think there's other avenues to do that. And that's down the road. I don't think that by restricting a dozen or so vacation rentals...
I don't think that by restricting a dozen or so vacation rentals, and I doubt if they're going to get more than maybe two dozen, it's going to make any difference. What if they get 50? If they get 50, think of the tax money we're doing. There's, you know. So let me ask you this, Paul. You recognize that 60% or more of the people who live in Mount Shasta don't live in Mount Shasta. Right, I understand that. They don't live in, but they, most of the owners of the downtown businesses live outside city limits. Those businesses are crucial to Mount Shasta, and it's crucial that those business people and future business people have long-term housing capabilities. Some of them may be renters rather than owners. I understand that, but I also feel that that is not going to break the housing shortage. That's not going to affect it that much. What's going to affect it is getting rid of the high cost of building and restrictions that the state of California has on building. It costs $50,000 to build a house before you can do anything. I think that's where we need to put our efforts, is on the high cost of building here, or in the state of California. $50,000 before you even put a shovel full of dirt out. That's what the real problem is. I mean, if you, you can build something for $150,000 a square foot according to some contractors, but then you put that $50,000 on there and it brings it up to $200 a square foot. That's what the problem is. And that's what I think we as a city and we as a county, and we need to work on our efforts to let the state of California know exactly where the real problem is. They don't want to do that because everybody wants a piece of the pie in the building, and everybody wants to make sure that we have water systems, we have this, we have that, we have everything, they're taking care of us, and we can't afford to build a house now because they have so many regulations on it.
Okay, so it's difficult to talk about this topic without, without talking about the larger topic.
Well, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is it's, the problem is not us trying to restrict what the county does, the problem is with the state and regulations. So I'm saying, us regulating them, that really doesn't make any difference in the long run. That's not going to solve the problem.
Okay. John, have you a comment?
No, I'll just make a motion. I'll move that the City Council recommend to the city staff that they develop, on a case-by-case basis, a practice for dealing with short-term rentals, regulations within the city's sphere of influence.
I ask for clarification of the motion. What do you mean, case-by-case basis? And what would be, what would be the objective criteria?
As a case, as the county requests information or any sort of discussion with the city planning staff, they deal with it on a case-by-case basis versus having a general policy, because we don't have a general policy at this point.
So it's essentially adopting staff's recommendation, is your motion?
That's what I'm trying to, that is correct. I'm trying to rephrase what's here as clearly as I can.
Is there a second to John's motion?
I'll second.
Paul, any discussion?
The concern I have with that motion is it isn't really giving any input to the county. It's, and it's, we've already heard the, what the planner would do if she were to receive a, an inquiry. I think what the county is asking for is something from council where it has, what's the council's policy decision?
I understand, and I think, I think that we can't arrive at something we can all agree at, agree on, that would be feedback to the county, so.
The question is whether we can have three people, a majority of council, come up with something that we can agree on.
Right, that's the question.
I'm still sticking with, if you had a choice between someone, a short-term rental that had a caretaker and a short-term rental that did not, I would go with a short-term rental with a caretaker, simply because you have someone on site to take care of any problems, whether you need the sheriff, police, et cetera, whatever, they are the first ones on site to respond and be the caretakers at the site. And they don't have to live in the, in the big house that's being rented, they could have, you know, a shack on the side or whatever, but I would, I would say, I really support a caretaker on site for short-term rental, and therefore you have a place that's being resided in year-round, and you also have a vacation rental offer.
And I supported that for the, for the Mount Shasta discussion. I'm not comfortable personally suggesting to the county how they manage. It's similar to what Paul was saying. We've elected the county supervisors, they, we can give them input, but I'm not comfortable getting, that's, giving them that kind of specific direction when it doesn't really solve our problem. It might, it might do part of it, but I'm just not, I think it's a jurisdictional issue for me.
It does kind of solve it, because if you do have a caretaker on site, you're providing full-time housing and you're providing vacation rental on the same property, you're doubling up your availability and possibilities. And I think they are asking for recommendation personally.
We're not going to give any direction to the county, because the county is going to make its own decisions, the Board of Supervisors is going to make their own decisions, but they'd like, what they've said to us is, we'd like to hear how you feel about this, where you are, so that we can take that into consideration, because we have a legal obligation to take that into consideration. The county has a legal obligation to consider the city's position when something is happening in the city's sphere of influence. That's why we can't simply say, county, do whatever you want, because the county has a legal obligation to first consider the city's position. So we need, we have a legal obligation, I think, to give the county some sense of what our position is.
Well, why don't we then ask, tell them that we do have a housing shortage, perhaps share some of the housing discovery recommendations we came up with, and then ask them for what they could do, do to help us with this, with this situation. Ask for their recommendations, rather than us recommending to them what they should do. That would be my recommendation.
I would be supportive of that, as well as a motion that said we would prefer short-term rentals in the sphere of influence, which are part of the property where the owner or renter is on site, if somebody wants to make that motion.
We already made, the motion on the floor is that we would go with staff recommendations. Is there a second on that? Yeah, Paul seconded it. Okay, so let me take it to a vote. Thank you for the reminder about process. All those in favor of the motion as stated?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make another motion, that we indicate to the county a preference for short-term rentals for where there is a owner or renter on site, rather than short-term rentals that are simply being used for short-term rentals.
You want to make a motion that?
That is my motion.
That, that they incorporate that, that they consider that, that I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear you.
That is correct, that we express our preference for that type of short-term rental.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this would be two, this would be in the same correspondence? Uh huh. Discussion?
That actually limits, eliminates the motion that was just made. It changes it.
No, it doesn't.
And here's, here's the problem with what I see, is zoning regulations, in order to have two, two structures on a piece of land, the county has certain restrictions for that. State of California now allows you to have that, but it's not allowed to be a vacation rental, it has to be a long-term rental. So you're running into some zoning problems requiring that, not too many pieces of property have a second structure on it that you're allowed to do it. And, and the way, and Juliana can answer this better than me, but as I understand, a new state, state secondary housing unit, it has to be a long-term, and you can't turn the bigger one into a short-term. You understand the limo we have? As long as the owner, as long as the owner is living on site, owner can live in the big house or in the tiny home. But you cannot rent a tiny home as a vacation rental. It has to be a lo, it has to be a long-term rental. What, what, what this would incorporate, Paul, and what I was envisioning a possibility, and perhaps Councilmember Wagner was also, B&amp;B. So a B&amp;B is a short-term rental, but it has one who's a primary resident. So there's an example where this would apply. Yeah, I just think there's so few secondary units out there on properties in the county, I can think of maybe 10 within five miles of Mount Shasta. My motion did not limit it to second units. It was, it was a preference for rental, short-term rentals where the owner or primary renter, long-term renter was also on site. So what you're saying is, the motion says we prefer you do this, but you don't have to. That is correct. Okay.
Again, that's distinguishing between the rental of a living room unit or a portion of a living unit. So again, going beyond the two structures, a resident could be on site and rent a portion of their living unit, that would be preferred than renting the entire living unit.
Okay, so for clarification, we're supposed to be giving direction to staff, so we've approved the case-by-case approach, and now we're asking them to simultaneously do this?
My motion is to give input to the Board of Supervisors.
And who would do that? Kathy?
It would be part of the staff's correspondence. So what I understand is, we've passed the first one, the second one is, is a suggestion that we would add to that correspondence, a suggestion that if we, if they're considering passing, approving a short-term rental, that we would prefer it be one that is homeowner or caretaker occupied, so that the entire structure couldn't be rented out as a short-term rental. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all those in favor of the Second Amendment, which would add to the correspondence that Julie would send? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Okay, I believe we're finished with that discussion. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Juliana. So now we go to council reports on attendance at appointed or outside meetings. Tim, will we start with you?
Start with somebody else that'll think about that.
Okay, so I can clear up my attendance at meetings. The DAC meeting apparently was postponed till the 28th, so, yeah, there was no meeting there, and the library tax, there hasn't been any meetings, so, no meetings to report on.
Paul?
Went to a, what meeting was that we went to, Tim? That you left early? The? Oh, that was the CDAC meeting. Nothing happened, really. I went to a dinner for the Breast Cancer Prevention Partners. They're the people who put on to breast cancer, climb against the odds. Went to that last week. They are going to do it again this year. They bring a lot of money to Mount Shasta every year. They also have an incredible cause that they support for the prevention of breast cancer. It would be my recommendation that we look into having, giving them the key to the city, having a breast cancer prevention week in Mount Shasta when they're here climbing the mountain, and.
So would you like to propose this under a future agenda item, a special presentation, perhaps?
Yeah, so that's what I would like to do. The Mount Shasta Lady Bears, this isn't a meeting I attended, but they are playing tomorrow night at the high school at 6:00 PM, and the boys are playing at 8:00 PM. So it's playoff time, that's all.
Barbara?
February 15th Lions meeting, they're still active, and they're going to have a dinner. It's the 100th anniversary of the Lions, and so we, we got in the rate, under the deadline for being part of that 100th anniversary, we'll be having a celebration at Lucille's March 18th as new chartered Lions group. I went, I attended the February 20th Planning Commission meeting, very, very informative, great group dynamic, really love how they're working. I don't have any offer, any details to offer on that, but I just, and on February 22nd, I attended the hearing at the Superior Court for the MOU that this, the Weed City Council signed for the city water source of Bo Springs with the Roseburg Corporation, so I was able to hear that. And then I went to the RWAG meeting, the Regional Water Action Group meeting today for a few hours. That's it.
Tim, are you ready?
Sure. In terms of CDAC, Mark Clor, who has been the chair, has resigned from that committee, so there are, there's another one or two vacancies, because I'm not sure that Tessa Montgomery is going to stay on that committee. So I would hope that our deputy city clerk will be announcing on a regular basis at future council meetings, the volunteer opportunities. I had to leave that meeting early to attend a local transportation commission meeting up in Waicata. Every year, there is a vote for the chair, the chair rotates between one of the city representatives and one of the county representatives. So this year, it was the city representative, and Joan Freeman is the new chair for this coming year.
Okay, thank you. I attended a Siskiyou homelessness coalition meeting during which every one of the towns that did the point-in-time count of homeless reported their results. There was quite a bit of discussion about next steps, that was continued to the next meeting. I attended a smaller meeting regarding the League of California Cities Rural Cities Initiative that we're hoping to share with other cities at the league conference in September. We talked a little bit about how to prepare for that. That was with Mayor Joan Smith and their city manager, and Charles Anderson, this LOCC staff. I watched a Trail Town webinar about a successful trail town venture in the Alleghenies in Pennsylvania, which included quite a bit of interesting economic development information, one point of which was, if you're really going to make, if your trails are going to make a difference in your economic development, you need to put beds and heads. You don't charge people who are bicycling or walking on foot, what you really need to do is provide for multiple-day opportunities, either regionally or in the town, for people to want to stay. So one of the things that we discussed at the PCTA event meeting was the need to reach out beyond Dunsmere, which we had already begun, to include McLeod, Etna, and Sayad Valley, all of which have the trail passing either through or very nearby, to establish a more collaborative effort. We talked with a possible funder, which would be the Ford Family Foundation for an event, and she emphasized the need to have a collaborative approach and also an opportunity for. opportunity for citizen participation, so we've just begun talking about some kind of serving or some kind of participation, particularly by students, Paul, so we'll, we'll need to connect with you on that. I attended a Ford Family Foundation workshop called Across the Divide, which is intended to help, um, encourage conversation across any divide, this one happened to be a political divide, with an understanding that, um, we, it would benefit all of us to encourage ourselves and others to stop dehumanizing the perspective represented by the opposite party. Quite a bit of information there that I came away with. And then I attended with Barb this morning, the Regional Watershed Action Group, I attended by phone, I've asked Barb to serve as the alternate on that committee, just as Jeff asked me to serve. It's, it's a committee with a lot of work, there's a funding, a, a project priority funding cycle coming up at the end of this year into 2019, and the, um, information that was presented this morning had to do with the expenditure of the $86,000 that came to our Sacramento region, upper Sacramento region, to update the plan that was done in 2000, a while ago, a few years ago, um, and, and talked about the disadvantaged community process that they're undergoing. And then I left the meeting, and, uh, I can share the minutes with you by, by email, if you'd like, later. So it's, this is the program that brought us $4.2 million a few years ago, for water meters and the water main replacement, so it's a very important program to all of us, and, um, should Barb agree to be the alternate, it'll take two of us in consort with the staff to put together some proposals that hopefully will be funded. And that's it for me, thank you. Okay, uh, future agenda items, lastly, any suggestions beyond what you see there?
We had two additions we made to the March 12th meeting, one is the, um, the Columbia Telecommunications Ad Hoc Committee's Status Report on the CTC Contract, uh, for presentation to council and discussion and direction by council, and then we also have, um, the Proposition 68 Legislation Letter that would be put on for council approval.
Okay, that's it for now, that's all I have. And, uh, Paul, would you repeat what you would like?
Uh, Breast Cancer, Breast Cancer Prevention Partners Week, and it'll be in June, the second or third.
Do you see that as a special presentation, or simply an item?
Well, if you give a special presentation to the chamber, let's do that, yeah, I can bring some people in who have climbed Mount Shasta, and give a little, well, I've done that a few times.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which agenda would you like this on? Which agenda would you like to place this on?
Yeah, let's put it, uh-
In May?
Uh, June, uh, June?
Well-
No, let's, can we do it pretty quick? April, yeah.
What about Earth Day?
Yeah, there's, uh, as far as I know, there's several events happening on Earth Day, wait. Uh, I'll second it. There's a number of events happening around Earth Day that, uh, we, we probably should anticipate, I think the weed, the invasive weed thing is happening again, the cleanups associated with Clean and Safe Mount Shasta, um, it just seems to me there's one other thing. When is Earth Day? Anybody know?
Um, April 20th.
Oh, so it's coming.
It's typically the, like, the third week of April.
Okay, so we still have some time on that.
Around April 20th, 21st timeframe.
Let's wait till we get some specific proposals, thank you, yeah, yeah.
You can do a TV date.
Okay, I think we're done, let's adjourn, thank you.